Okay, I'd like to call this organizational meeting to order. Roll call.
Mr. Ballard?
Here.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic of which we stand, and to which we worship, and to whom we give our due diligence. For our own good and for the good of the people. Okay, we'd like to first welcome everybody to this organizational meeting and second, we welcome our new board member, Yvonne Johnson, and we'd like to move on to the oath of office of our new elected board member.
I'll give you the microphone. You just want to hold up your right hand and repeat after me. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio and that you will faithfully and partially discharge your duties as board member of the Board of Education of the Lorraine City School District, Lorraine County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I do.
If I can just get you to sign it.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, you'd like to open the floor to nominations for President?
I nominate Tony Demakia to be President for the 2018 year.
Second.
Motion to close nominations?
So moved.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Absent.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, you'd like to open the floor to nominations for President?
I nominate Tony Demakia to be President for the 2018 year.
Second.
Motion to close nominations?
So moved.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Absent.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Now you see that.
I will catch up.
Just don't say "Mr."
Okay, now we need a declaration of President?
We have to vote for the President, all right?
Okay, so I need a motion to vote for President?
So moved.
Second.
Actually, I just run through the motion. Call roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Absent.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Okay. Not a declaration?
Yep, now we need a declaration.
Okay. The Board has approved Tony Demakia as President of the Board of Education for 2018 calendar year.
And now we need the oath of office.
That music is like summertime beach music.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio and that you will faithfully and partially discharge your duties as Board President of the Board of Education of the Lorraine City School District, Lorraine County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during the continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I do.
Sign that.
Okay, you'd like to open the floor up for nominations for Vice President?
I would nominate Mr. Mark Ballard.
Third that? Motion to close nominations?
Motion to close. Motion to close.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Ballard?
Absent.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Need a declaration, Vice President?
The Board has approved Mark Ballard as Vice President of the Board of Education for the 2018 calendar year.
Oath of office.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio and that you will faithfully and partially discharge your duties as Board Vice President of the Board of Education of the Lorraine City School District, Lorraine County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during the continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I will.
Sign that.
Congratulations.
Thanks, sir. Congratulations to you as well.
Next order of business is fixing the daytime and place of our regular Board of Education meeting. Currently, we are meeting the first and third Mondays at 6:30 right here at the Media Center. I'd like to keep all that the same if there's any objections except for maybe moving up the time to 5:00. If that's okay with everybody? Okay, so we need a motion to keep Mondays, the first and third Mondays of every month, 5:00 right here at Lorraine High School Media Center?
So moved. Support.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Need a declaration, Vice President?
The Board has approved Mark Ballard as Vice President of the Board of Education for the 2018 calendar year.
Oath of office.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio and that you will faithfully and partially discharge your duties as Board Vice President of the Board of Education of the Lorraine City School District, Lorraine County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified?
I will.
Sign that.
Congratulations.
Thanks, sir. Congratulations to you as well.
Next order of business is fixing the daytime and place of our regular Board of Education meeting. Currently, we are meeting the first and third Mondays at 6:30 right here at the Media Center. I'd like to keep all that the same if there's any objections except for maybe moving up the time to 5:00. If that's okay with everybody? Okay, so we need a motion to keep Mondays, the first and third Mondays of every month, 5:00 right here at Lorraine High School Media Center?
So moved. Support.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Need a motion to continue taping and televising our board meetings?
Motion to tape and televise regular board meetings or special board meetings or any board meetings.
Support.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Need a motion to continue taping and televising our board meetings?
Motion to tape and televise regular board meetings or special board meetings or any board meetings.
Support.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Looking at the rest of the organizational agenda, I don't see much that has changed. Any objections to going to consent agenda for the rest of the items? The only one that we would not, would obviously be the committee meeting appointments, which we would have to reconsider since having a new board member on, and that's something that we could discuss at a later date.
I only have one question. I think we can do that. Josh, go to you. There are a few items that actually require approval of specific points. Can those be also in the consent agenda or do we need to do those separately?
They can be in a consent. Unless we're changing something, I would say then we'd spell it out, but as long as it's remaining the same.
And then for the committee into the efficiency of Ms. Johnson, if while we're looking at this, if you kind of look through and just see if there's, because I remember my first organizational meeting, I was like, what is that? What is that? So if there's any of those, what is that's or what are those? Or we can just do the consent, but maybe just go down and so you know what these things that we've approved are, some of them might be odd or not.
You go down to motion and open it up for questions and vote.
Yeah. So I make a motion to do it as a consent agenda.
So we would be approving items 9.01 to 20.01 minus 18.01, which is a committee appointment?
I'll second it.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, we need a motion to adjourn the organizational meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Or Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Don't try and do too many things at once.
I'm welcome officially.
Yeah, you're in. So let's roll right into our special board meeting. So call this special board meeting to order. Roll call.
Mr. Ballard?
Here.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
First hearing of the public. I need a motion to approve or amend and sign a minutes from the December 18th board meeting. It's 2017, of course.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Any old business?
Just have one thing I just want to follow up with. I don't know if Mr. Hill has the answers to those questions, but you know, I've had a lot of people ask me about the current status of Central Office and what's been going on, and it's my understanding that currently we have, I asked for some information from Mr. Hill and he gave that information to me in a very timely fashion, so I do appreciate that. But my concern was, you know, I asked about any terminations that have occurred in Charleston, and the answer was there has been no terminations. But it's also my understanding that Marva K. Jones, who was administrator at Central Office, Carol Goshling, who was administrator at Central Office, our former sitting, oh, let me correct myself, our sitting superintendent, Dr. Jeff Graham, is, those three people that I know of are no longer with us, and if they have not been terminated, do you know what their current status is? Is that fair to ask you? Let me just...
I will say nothing as officially. I haven't seen anything official. Other than I can report on Dr. Graham, there was some back and forth with the ESC, there was an addendum signed through the ESC, through the ESC, and also an agreement with Dr. Graham himself that has been signed by some parties but not all from what I've seen.
Yes, it's my understanding that there was an agreement that was reached. It was signed by Dr. Graham and his attorney, sent to the district in, I don't know, a month or so. It's been sitting with the district and the district hasn't signed it, so Lorraine City Schools is still paying Jeff Graham, and he is still our sitting superintendent. Would that be accurate?
Paying, no. We did a contract payout based on the agreement, and I do know that I did, it has been signed from the CEO, and it's official, the addendum is officially enacted through the ESC.
But I think also...
I think what hasn't been returned is, and I sent the copy of the addendum over to the ESC, now that we have Mr. Hardy's signature, I need to return a copy to Dr. Graham, so then he would, then it would be fully executed.
And you said we're not currently paying, but I think, didn't that entail paying the entire balance of his contract?
Correct.
Which was, is that public information? I mean, what?
It is.
So what was, so basically, we've paid his contract, we've given that money to the ESC?
Yes.
To pay him?
Yes.
So we are, so we're paying for superintendent, I mean, we paid for superintendent.
Yes.
And then we will probably end up, I'm assuming, replacing superintendent?
I don't know about that. I would assume so because we have to have a licensed superintendent per law, but I don't know where that is.
So right now, who is the, according to the law, who is this certified superintendent in our district?
At this point, I don't know. I would think we would need an interim at least in the time being, but I don't...
But presently, we don't have...
Not on, not of record, no.
And what does, what does compliance around that look like? So...
I don't know officially, but I believe you, a district has to have a licensed superintendent and treasurer at any given time, but I don't know that the ins and outs of the superintendent piece.
Okay. I'm looking, perhaps I just can't find it. What is the detailed report from the CEO about our superintendent and about the people that are hired or not hired, people that need to be hired? Where are we on that? Because I don't see any information, detailed information, that would help the board know what situation that we're in. I just don't, is it somewhere else?
No, you're a new board member and you have as much information as we have.
Oh.
If that answers your question, any.
Well, that means that we have a superintendent that's not in place, but we're going to pay him until June, his full salary.
July 31st.
To July 31st.
Correct.
But he's not even going to be in the building.
Correct.
He's going to be located...
It's up to the ESC right now.
Yeah, unofficially until Jeff really receives it. According to the ESC, the addendum that was signed, which is an addendum to our ESC contract, is for services in a kind of a secondary piece to where if we need to reach out to Dr. Graham for any guidance, we can in that capacity, but there's an agreed-upon amount, which was the balance of his contract with us. So essentially, he became an employee of the ESC, and all of his benefits that he would have accrued through his contract here will now be paid out through the ESC. But for the next six months, basically, well, December 15th is the official date, so anytime after December 15th, he was officially, he's an officially an ESC employee.
And how much are we subsidizing?
It's the balance of his contract, and I don't know it off the top of my head, but it's all, it's all the intricacies of his contract. It's not just salary, he gets...
Everything.
Yeah, health insurance, life insurance, all of, anything that was built into his contract here would be afforded to him there, and if they don't have a comparable piece to it, it was basically, it was, it was all justified out in the dollar amount we gave them. So we basically gave them a lump sum of whatever we figured his, the balance of his contract would be, and it's up to them to basically pay him out and give him the proper benefits and everything he needs for the balance.
If possible, at our next meeting, could we have that lump sum note, exactly that number one?
Sure, I'll actually send it over to you tonight. I can send you a copy of the addendum tonight.
So for everyone gets that, that would be helpful.
And the information about the employees that are terminated or not terminated or, and the ones that we need? I saw something in the paper about we had chief of, and there's a lot of strategic, I think there were seven or eight of them noted.
There's nothing, there's been no official hires of the chiefs that, there's nothing been official, so, and I'm not aware of if there's any specific person that's been put into any spots. I do know that's the intent is to hire those chiefs, but I haven't been told who is or who isn't. I, to be honest, I don't even know who interviewed for them other than, you know, just hearing kind of the inner-office gossip of who was looking at doing this or doing that or whatnot. As for the terminations, it's the same situation. Nothing official has crossed my desk in regards to terminations. I know that from what I see, Carol Goshling and Marva K. Jones, both are not at work from what I've been told. They were, they're going through the process, but nothing official. I don't know when last day, their last day paid was, I don't know, I don't know anything beyond that. And I've requested the information because I need to process payroll accordingly.
Okay.
He, I've been told to continue them on the payroll until told otherwise.
So we have three administrators at home getting paid their full pay?
Well, at the next board meeting, could we have that information?
If I get it, I would be more than happy to.
And if not, could we have a statement on the reason why we don't have it?
Sure.
And I would like to extend a formal invitation to Mr. Hardy to attend all of the board meeting or as many as he could so that we could work in a cohesive manner, that we would love to do that with him.
Okay. I know I've invited him to prior meetings before too, and all I can do is request, I'm kind of the middleman here.
Is there some reason why we can't have him here? Did he explain that already?
We've invited him to all of our board meetings. And to be honest with you, we haven't even got a response of why he's not here. We just don't get an appearance.
And I guess that's where I'm at. I mean, I know we asked Josh a lot of tough questions that he probably, it's pretty unfair to ask him who's looking after other adults. So I would point that to our president and say, could you follow up and continue to invite him to our meetings in the future, please?
And I have another suggestion that we should probably do, and we can consult with legal counsel on the wording if we need to, but send a formal letter to the commission, to the chair, and to see the other commission members. Basically, simply, because we shouldn't assume maybe that they're fully aware of exactly what's going on. And they're the entity charged by the state to hire and deal with the CEO, and they've done the hiring, but at this stage, we should make sure they're aware that we have invited the CEO and that we would like for the CEO to attend board meetings, we would like for the board to be updated on ongoing things, and we have not recently had any communication from the CEO as a board nor from the commission. And I think if, I think that's a reasonable request, and somehow or another, we have to get our request or they have to be knowledgeable of the lack of response to our request. And then if they choose to do nothing in that regard, at least they're fully aware, because I would hate for them to say, well, why didn't you say something to us? Which, you know, and I think all adults have to hold all adults accountable, so no one should be left out of the loop of information of what's been requested, and I don't think anyone's made any unreasonable request.
No. Well, I'd like to say that I would like the commission, the Board of Education, and the CEO to work collectively together if we're trying to have a positive effect on the students, and it's supposed to be all about the students, and if all of us work together, and I think we could arrive at a conclusion much faster.
In our documents today, do we touch on legal counsel at all?
Yes, it's in there.
It is in there.
It is.
So we, so I'm understanding, the board still has its legal counsel in place, but I have heard that the CEO has hired additional legal counsel for the district?
There were letters sent out to current legal counsel that the district would be using a different legal counsel, and they've been using a different legal counsel since.
And is that retainer or fee structure in place where we know what we're spending on the, because I believe I heard it was Baker &amp; Hosteller was one, and I forget about the additional, but I know those are some of the same ones that are used down in some of the other areas that are in jeopardy.
I don't know, but Baker &amp; Hosteller, I haven't seen any.
You haven't heard that? Okay. All my information I'm getting, I'm grasping at it because we're not really having any.
Innocent Britain, I think is the current, yeah, law.
And I also know he is, we're still utilizing Giardini.
For real estate property.
I'm just saying, for something.
We have been using him still.
Yeah, and our expectation is to retain him as our...
As the board.
Yeah, because we still have pending legal issues. We're an elected body, we're, the district is presently in lawsuits, which uniquely we were named as individuals as well as board members.
Okay.
This, the legal assistance that speaks in here, this is a specific OSBA piece, so you can contact OSBA. So you still have that, but then in regards to all the other legal stuff?
Also, there was in here legal counsel.
See, that's what I did. I didn't see it.
Yes, I did.
I saw the OSBA portion.
Yeah, that's what I saw. Yeah, there it is, legal counsel, 1303.
Thank you. We really didn't talk about an amount, we just reestablished that we would do that. Okay. Thank you.
The only other thing I have in our old business that unfortunately read in a newspaper that the school district, I don't know if this is a financial matter as well, declined the donation from the city for the baseball facility, pipe yard? And my concern is, I know that we did numbers in the past on what it would cost to build just a varsity baseball field and just a varsity softball field, and we were looking as a district in excess of $1 million for creating those two fields alone. So I guess it's my concern that if we decline a donation that has several baseball fields and our baseball programs have, and softball programs have no facilities, where's that $1 million going to come from? Has that been a request to finance?
Not to finance.
That money?
I was made aware of that decision, but was not told the direction otherwise.
And I don't even know about that, you know, because I think a lot of times when we're given costs, who knows if they're real cost or whatever. I think for me, more challenging is the manner, from what I understand, in which that decision was made. We've been working with the city for a few years...
Over two years, yeah.
...and trying to figure out the pipe yard and, and if most of the kids playing Little League Baseball are kids in our district, and how to navigate that. I think we technically lease the fields for a certain time, and I think part of it was, you know, there was a question, did we want to incur that entire facility, and what would that look like? Why? Because we only use it for X amount of time, and how, what are the cost maintenance? And we were trying to get all of those figures.
And I know there was some contracts coming up for the other people who use it, and whether or not they'd have that revenue to kind of offset, or I think the one group that was using it was the one that was keeping up the grounds, and if they weren't going to be under contract anymore, they wouldn't keep the grounds up, so there was the cost that was considered for that.
And I just knew it was a complex scenario, and from what I understand from the mayor is, he received an email notifying him that we were declining. Not a conversation, not a discussion, and again, so there were, there were just so many discussions, and I think in terms of what we've been trying to establish with the relationship with the city, be it sharing space for storage, sharing equipment to help doing roads and doing our paving and those kind of things, there were issues of tax, of TIFs, different things, so we were trying to really work cooperatively, and how does this impact that piece? Because if we've declined that in a way that's very challenging, how do we know where our kids are going to be able to play spring sports? We sent them a, an email saying we decline. Well, we've, I'm sure with the LEL, we're already scheduled for our games, and when you tell someone, take your field and whatever, then what do we do about spring sports? So that's a...
The only other field's available. The only other fields available belong to the city.
Well, yeah, so with the city being, yeah, so those are, I guess those are some concerns that we have. And more understanding about that whole transaction. Also, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, gentlemen, there was discussions of some pending properties that were potentially being donated. I think Mr. Lucas.
Lucas property owner.
And so again, there's just.
Adjacent to the.
Yeah, there's a lot of little pieces and parts. And we hope that the CEO is aware of all of these dynamic things that are going on, impacting the decision. And then we would hope, because whether it's a CEO, it's still on behalf of the Lorraine City School District. And I think that whatever communication is transpiring with the mayor, with city council, needs to be in a way that represents positive relationship building. And I think we as a board are still accountable and responsible for relationships with our district and our community. And so if, you know, it's not about whether we're making decisions or not. It's how is our district interacting with its community? And that's, from what I, the words, the reports we've gotten, it's been a pretty challenging process. So, I don't know if anybody else has heard it anymore.
Yeah, you're pretty accurate.
Yeah.
That's what I heard. I know in the past, usually if there was a property that was being offered up for donation, I was a part of that discussion and we talked through it. And in most cases, if we took on that property, I would have to sign as the treasurer that we were accepting that property. It's basically, you know, just transfer title, basically. I haven't been involved in those discussions. I was told that we weren't taking the pipe yard. I don't know how much discussion was involved in that prior to me being told that, I'm not sure.
You know, in all fairness, I think had we, had we had an explanation why someone didn't do what we thought was a slam dunk, you know, I think maybe, maybe there is a viable explanation. It's just that there, is it any explanation forthcoming, you know, to tell us that, hey, maybe, maybe it was too expensive to, the upkeep, or, or, or something fell through in the contracts with? Because there was a lot of people involved in this. But the whole thing is, is that we don't know anything.
I don't even know, and I'm not suggesting it was a slam dunk. I mean, we had a lot of questions in terms of.
Oh, yeah.
You know, will this work? Should it work? Who do we hire to manage the facility, all that stuff? I just simply think that, and from what I'm gathering, because we're speculating everything, is there's a list of priorities. And perhaps this ball field, based on the things that we're trying to do, wasn't a priority. Well, then you communicate, hey, at this stage, you know, we've got some other issues that are more pressing. Let's keep our arrangements as is, and then we'll deal with this later. And again, that's, when I'm hearing from the mayor's office and other folks about the communication process, or lack thereof, it's not about what decision's made. It's whether we like the decision or not, whether we agree, because sometimes we disagree about decisions that we make. It's the process in which that's communicated. And does that injure relationships? And does that compromise our future relationships? That's the thing that's important. We can decide, we could have told the city, we don't want to own the pipe yard. But we would have also talked about, so how do we do what's next? I think that's the part that's frustrating is when a city school district and city government aren't sharing information that's fair and reasonable to each party, that's not healthy.
I guess the bottom line also is, we want to know where we're playing baseball at in the spring. And if.
In your backyard now.
Hope they can swim.
I'd just like to say a general comment from my first time being on the board. I'm disappointed in such a lack of communication between the commission, the CEO, and the Board of Education. I don't think the board should have to say, I heard, I think, I don't know. Because as an arm of the Board of Education for the city of Lorraine, we should know more information than that. And we should not always appear as if we're giving Mr. Hill a hard time. Because he's the only one here that we can ask questions of. And it's apparent that they don't put him in the loop until the very end, until he can do his job as a treasurer, because he does not need to be in the administrative steps. So I think once again, that the CEO needs to know that we are not a negative entity for him to deal with, that we would love to help him in any way we can, because these are our children that we are trying to work with.
And Ms. Johnson, to be fair to, to your point, and to Mr. Williams' point earlier, I've spoken with the chair of the commission on several occasions. Good positive conversations, but to be real honest, I'm not sure the commission is aware of all these things either. Their role is really not to hold him accountable. They had really one responsibility is to search and select the CEO. And their only other job is they can fire him. But the CEO reports directly to the State of Ohio by law, and there really is no accountability for him. And some of the things that we've talked about, I've spoken with the chairman of that commission, and he wasn't aware of some of these things. So it leads me to believe that they're not in the loop either. So, I mean, we're not alone, to your point.
So the person that has all the information is the CEO?
Correct. Any other old business? Report recommendations of the treasurer.
I have one item, 8.01, consider approval of the proposed 2018-2019 tax budget.
Is there any supplemental material? So everybody got, because we didn't get our board docs notification.
Oh. I can.
If you guys want to take a look at it.
No, no, I don't, I don't need to, we can, I can look at it post, I'm just saying. You know, I mean, was I the only one who didn't get the board doc notification? Okay, so, yeah, so I.
I didn't get it.
Board docs.
You got the notification about the meeting Friday, did you? I didn't get it.
No, I didn't get a board docs, nor, normally it has the agenda, it has the attachments. Is this an item that needs to be on today's meeting?
Yes, it has to be submitted to the county by the 19th. This is the standard. The tax budget is your standard piece that you submit to the county. It helps them set tax rates for the next year. So this is what they use to set bond rates, things like that. It's, it's showing current balance, your estimated encumbrance at the end of the year, projected spending. It's a pretty standard document. But there's, there's nothing out of the norm. This is produced out of my office. We bring it to the, we advertise it in the paper in December, saying that we're going to put it on for approval in the first meeting of the year. And then I have to have it submitted by the 19th.
So then I guess I would request that via the, with even foregoing the board docs, if it could be emailed to the board members.
Oh, sure.
So they have it, that way they can refresh themselves if necessary. I just, again, normally I get that board docs piece and we can click on, I didn't get it.
Okay. Yeah, I'll send it to you guys right after me.
Satisfactory to everybody?
It's hard for me to approve it before I see it.
Right, I'll take a look.
I'll wait until I get a pad.
Yeah.
Here. I got a couple of copies, if you want to take a look. This is the original.
That's too much.
It's just the first two pages is the tax budget. Everything else you guys are looking at is the backup on how I came to those members.
Let me ask you this, what, is this significantly different than last year's tax budget?
No, typically what we do is, we'll account for any increases, because they're going to be accounted for in the encumbrances from the previous year. We'll look at those adjustments, and if we know we're going to have a slight tick in payroll or things along those lines, we'll try and factor it into those numbers. But for the most part, we try to stay in the same ballpark. The main purpose of that is to set the bond rate. So they want to know if we're carrying over any additional funds in prior year. They're going to look at that, and they're going to produce the bond rate based on that for next year.
This does bring another question to my mind, though. When it comes to the building projects that we have, where are we at with closing that out? Are we demoing the other school building over Southview? What's our reserve that we have in place? Is there, is there still a reserve? And where are we at in that whole balance?
Those monies are still out there. Nothing has really come through, other than small adds and end things. So for the most part, that, that balance is still out there. I'm not sure if an official, official, anything has been decided about Southview, whether it'd be demoed. I know, like I stated last meeting, I know the state wants an answer about the direction we're going. I don't know if anything official has been sent to them or not.
Is that the same holding with the LFI money? There's been no expenditure of LFI since our last?
If they are, they're a small little building. Like I know, I think today we got a, something for wiring. The only thing I've seen come through is like wiring for, because we got approved for the, the new internet system. The dark fiber versus the lit fiber through tech, and I'm not going to act like I know anything about any of that. But it got approved, and so I know technology, I think they put something through today for some of the cabling.
And that was through an LFI?
No.
I'm not sure which piece, it's probably not the LFI piece, but it was the building piece, building function. Because it was partially through the wiring.
Okay, it's for the new facility?
Yes.
Okay.
But that, that's, but there hasn't been anything major that has come through then at all.
Yeah, but dark fiber was the fiber that connected all the school buildings together, right? And it all came back to here because behind those doors is the hub for everything where it comes into.
Yes. I think supposedly it gives us, and again, I don't, I won't act like a technology expert by any means, but it supposedly gives us more bandwidth, allows us to be able to transport more gigabytes for usage. And I don't know if you know any more than that, Joe?
And work simultaneously without getting, without getting kicked off and slowed down and booted, yeah.
Yeah, it gives us more capacity, basically.
Yeah. Well, this was, this was supposed to meet expectations in the future. And that's why we're, that's why I would suggest that we get it.
Yes, and it's, it's been something kind of, I think it's been two years in the making. The first year it was, they wanted us to submit lit fiber proposals with dark fiber proposals. But it was after the deadline and all we had submitted was lit, or dark fiber proposals, because we thought we didn't have to also show an alternative for lit fiber. So this past year, we did it correctly, and submitted both, and it finally got approved.
And back to this item, we're clear that this is a, a approval that the board has to make.
That was a question I had. And my feeling on it was that those directly impact tax rates. So yes, I would think that would be something in regards to within the board's power, levying money, you know, things like that. You are setting rates that will directly impact taxpayers' bills, essentially, so.
Yeah, and I'm uncomfortable with this coming today, and you have to have it approved by the 19th, I understand. But for future reference, please give us more time.
I will, I apologize, I thought you guys, yeah, I thought it opened up, I thought I would have gave you guys the weekend, but.
Yes.
I apologize.
Thank you.
And not to belabor the issue, but to belabor the issue, it's one of the challenges when, because of lack of communication, and the communication we have is very unsettling, there develops a lack of trust. Not you, with you, but with the entire systemic process. And so we get no information that we request in that we feel morally or ethically, I should say, that we need. But we'll get a request, oh, but approve this. And it's like, well, have the CEO approve it. I mean, it, it's challenging when you, when we're, it's really challenging. And at a certain stage, the frustration is going to mount to the expressions that are not going to be as cordial, not going to be as friendly, and that's not healthy either. But I think people are getting frustrated.
Well, I tell you where it's going to lead to. It's going to lead to a point of there's going to be some levies that's got to come, it's got to come. And when those levies come and say, we need more money for our district, but we can't get any information on what's happening with the money that we already have, and we're paying people to stay home, and we're hiring new people, and we're flying them from across the world to come in, then as good stewards, it's tough for us to say, go get some more money, here, we'll give it to you. That's going to be tough. And I'm, I'm not saying that to you, I'm just looking at you because you're nodding, but I'm making a general statement.
Thank you for clarifying that, because that's absolutely, it's cut right to the, to the bone, okay? You know, here's, here's the first example of sign this, because only you can.
It's a tax issue.
And the next one's going to come, is a renewal, because only you can. And if it keeps coming like that.
So what?
Especially at the 11th hour.
The auditor will be very upset.
Well, information should be reciprocity.
Yeah.
Back and forth. We, we should share, they should share, everything should be at the level of clarity.
My new feeling is, from watching what happens in Washington DC.
Oh, please.
Right, it is unnecessary to have that kind of atmosphere.
I already got the book.
Here. And is, am I the only one feeling that kind of?
No.
It's got to be fixed.
Yeah, this is not reasonable. We can't effectively work like this.
It's not funny either, but that book's funny.
So is there a motion on the floor?
No, there hasn't been.
There's not.
Do we need a motion?
We do need a motion if, first off, if everybody's comfortable with putting a motion out there. I know your reservations, and it's well taken, because that's an excellent point in the whole conversation. I don't think I need to go back to that. But are there any objections to putting it?
I motion that we approve item 801.
Support.
Discussion? Roll call.
I will say that this is based on no new information. So obviously, I don't know if that's.
Yeah, that's not the point.
I know, I just didn't know if it helped.
No.
Because it's based on the information I currently have to go through and put the numbers to paper and, yeah. But, okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Damacchia?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. Any new business? Request from board members, besides the obvious?
You know my requests.
Second hearing of the public.
She's waiting, she's waiting.
Mamie Dillon, 228 Delaware Avenue, Lorraine, Ohio, I just have a few things. First of all, in all the years I've been doing this, we've always let people go and pay them, so I don't see an issue. We've always done it. I mean, Dr. Morgan, Dr. Axon, Mr. Tucker, I mean, let's, it can go on. So to me, that's nothing compared. The problem I see here is the State of Ohio Department of Education, who set this tier system up. They have it set up, I feel, for everybody to fail. They don't have any of you working together or consulting or whatever. It should be State of Ohio, Distress Committee, Mr. Hardy, or, you know, whoever the CEO, and Board of Education, and they should all be working together. There should be always a representation by each entity at each meeting. So everybody knows what's going on, and it should be in writing from the State Department of Education. So one says, no, I don't have to do it, the other doesn't. Because I don't see where there's success if you don't have a team. And if each entity is working against each other, it's not, we are not going to succeed again. You know, and then the third thing is, I'm sitting here, and you're saying about spending money for an attorney. Does the school board have a budget? Because their powers have been more or less taken away except for putting a school levy on. Is that it? Yes, or, you know, like, yes, they can, no? So do they have a budget? Is there going to be a budget within the school system for this Board of Ed? Because aren't they like required to go to like conferences, have meetings?
We actually approved.
But where's the money going to come from? Does it have to come from the main? Or it's like when they do the school budget, are, is the school, the Board of Education going to be aligned on the budget? And who's going to determine the amount? Do you have to set a budget up and send it to the CEO or to Mr. Hill to get it approved? That's another thing I'd like to know.
In regards to, well, I'll tell you.
In regards to, well, I'll tell you, how it's been done in the past is, I normally look at previous year's costs, and then I will propose that for approval. And that usually accounts for payment for meetings, also accounts for travel, attending conferences, things like that.
Okay, but the thing of it is, is they always approve the budget. Who approves the budget now?
It would go through the CEO. And I've, I've been.
That's all I know, is who, like, who approves the budget for the school board?
Well, the general budget, the CEO, and within that, the budget I proposed would include those items, because they would still be items that are still cost to the district, that, that can't be taken away. Conference attendances, being paid for meetings, things like that, is still, I haven't been instructed otherwise, I guess I said that, I won't say that can't be taken away. I have been instructed otherwise.
With, has the State of Ohio Department of Education been notified about how dissatisfied people are? That they feel that the citizens of Lorraine feel that the entities are not working together? I mean, like, there has to be somebody above to say, listen, knock it off now, we've got to work together. And I don't see that, I, I mean, like, if everything is local, how do they know what's going on? Who's feeding them the information?
It's a problem, it's not, it's not local.
The situation's not local.
That's why I'd like to know why they don't come here once in a while, where we can ask them the questions. Why couldn't they be invited to a school board meeting and answer our questions? That's what I'd like to know. I think that they need to answer questions, we're the taxpayers, and plus, even whoever's getting paid through the state, the money comes from somewhere, and who does it come from? Us, us, whether it's local money or state money, we all pay taxes, and I think we deserve answers. So.
Not to press any burden on our law director in the city of Lorraine. He represents the school district and the citizens, since it is funding.
Funding.
Voted on and approved and from the citizens, so. I mean, to answer your question, ODE is not going to come anywhere near this place. To be honest with you, governor's offices won't come anywhere near this place. Your best bet is to rally the folks and write your legislators and write your governor.
Well, I can't, I can't.
Only answer that we have.
I think, I think what we could do to help do the expedite is, we could draft a letter on behalf of our citizens, and then if there's a citizen who wants to make that request, I've talked to different legal counsel, and what they share with me is, there is a unique authority and power that citizens have in terms of their expectations of requests, that board members don't have, because we're not sitting as citizens, we're sitting as board members. And, and though our authority has been reallocated, the authority of citizens has not been. And so, when a citizen makes a request to have someone from ODE present at their school board meeting, that's very different than a board request.
Then I'd like somebody to help me, because of the fact that the citizens of Lorraine vote for the school board, and really, you're supposed to be representing us, but how can you represent us when you don't get all the information? That's the problem that I have. And everybody always says it's public information, so if it's public information, why don't we know it? So, yes, I would like somebody to help me.
I'll, I'll look into that.
And then, another thing about the pipe yard, it is amazing that they said and asked for you to, to take over the pipe yard and all those other fields back there, because I thought that's what it said in the paper, it just wasn't the pipe yard, it was all those other fields.
It was the whole complex.
When my husband and I, we've been, we were with Lorraine Youth Baseball for like twenty-five, thirty years, and supposedly, those fields were given to Lorraine Youth Baseball for one hundred years for a dollar a year. So I was just wondering how the city could take that away from Lorraine Youth Baseball. And I, I think that, you know, taking on that whole facility, you really need to take a hard look, because it is a lot of time to put into all that. I mean, I know from experience being down there, but I do understand the kids need to play somewhere.
And I think there was a lot, there were lots of pieces negotiated. I think one of the challenges that the fire representative presented is, the present least they were working under was very flawed.
Right.
And so it was questionable whether, who was what.
I mean, like, they could always think outside the box, if they need somewhere to play, you can go to Oberlin College and play. You know, they have a nice facility, there's other facilities around, I mean, like, I know it's Lorraine City Schools, but if you need a place to operate at, and that's not going to be an option for us, then we got to look elsewhere, outside the box, and.
Just adding, adding more expenditures.
Where's the cost of transportation?
Where's the ones we had before?
They're no longer there.
I mean, when, if this is saying, take the pipeline out of, out of play, where was the other baseball field? We had a baseball team, this is the first year they were playing?
No, we've always, no, we've always played.
No, 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 no. We tore the field down. It, it, it was, it was.
The worst is right here.
Parking lot.
They tore all the baseball fields down.
It was named after Jim Popeye.
It was behind Admiral King.
But there is a, there is a possibility, though, behind George Daniel Stadium, is that field still there? That they used to play on, where you could fix it up for the kids?
But I'm sure there's, I'm sure there's, I mean, there's, there's.
So just, you know, like, can't wait to the last minute.
And I'm not, I don't even know, it could be an assumption on anyone. That just because we didn't cooperate with the city, that doesn't mean the city doesn't want to cooperate with us.
I eventually would like to see Lorraine City Schools have a baseball field for the kids, and name it back to the Jim Popeye Field, because the gentleman has done so much for the city schools and for the children, that he deserved that honor.
They gave us one, we declined it.
Pardon me?
They gave us one, and we declined it.
What?
Pipe yard was given to us.
Yeah, I know, but.
We could have put whatever name we wanted to.
Yeah. So that's all I have to say, now I got to go to dinner.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
I'd like to say, I agree with you thoroughly, that information should be circular, so that everybody will know what the next person is doing, so we could all cooperate, so we can get the job done faster. But this locks down, it's not working out.
We're going to set up for failure, you know, and the kids.
My name is Linda Lee, and I live at fourteen thirty-five West Twenty-second Street in Lorraine. And one question I wanted to ask, what, what is ECS or ESC that you guys keep?
Educational Service.
Educational Services?
St. Elyria.
Okay, and I understand you to say that you can't give us the amount that the superintendent has been paid.
I can give you the amount, I just don't know, I have top of my headaches. I believe the addendum was for roughly about a hundred fifty-five thousand, some change. I just don't know the exact dollar amount, honestly, but I, I don't know if I'm giving you that number.
Okay, and I, I hear you all saying that the CEO has been invited to meetings, has not attended. But how, how many of you have gone to some of the town hall meetings that he held? Those meetings are totally transparent, and some of the, the conversation you're having right now was addressed at the last CEO meeting. So you don't have to say, well, I heard this, I heard that, I think this, and a lot of it is incorrect. I think Dr. Hardy is pretty transparent, like I said, he has these town hall meetings, I think he does it once a month, maybe more. But instead of speculating, instead of saying, well, he didn't come because I didn't, he didn't answer our invitation, then why don't you go? I mean, it pertains to the, the children of the district, it's not just what he's doing, I mean, he, whatever he, he decides on, it affects the children, I mean, to your point, you might, I mean, it should be called issue. Yeah, but like I said, I think if you go to some of those town hall meetings, you might get some answers to some of the questions you're talking about.
Well, I will be, if that's the only way I can get information, I'll just go to the town hall meetings.
And he also has provided an app, that you can go to on a computer, to find out all of the things that he's, he's proposing when he's done.
Going to a website.
And I guess, you know, normally, I would share this, ma'am, and with all due respect, I, we appreciate the town hall meetings. As a board, it's like, we as board members can submit a public information request to get information. As a board, that's not how you receive information. Again, I'm, I'm just stating, so you understand our perspective. And so, the board meetings in the state of Ohio, and, and that's how we, that's how, that's part of our, our functionality. So that is where we should have information, we should have previewed information. We should receive our information, not by submitting a public information request, not by going to the website to get information. There, there are information tracks designed for parents, for general public, for different, different entities. It's like this, the, the staff meetings, in a staff meeting, the staff gets information that might be also presented at a town hall meeting, but as a staff person, you receive information a certain way. And I think there is, it's reasonable that the board would be informed, when I'm at a, at a town hall meeting, I'm not the board. And so, it's, it's not about even me sitting in a one-on-one meeting with David Hardy, it's about the relationship between the board and the CEO, and we are only a board as a whole. When we go to town hall meetings, we are not the board. And so, I think it's reasonable that for elected officials, elected by their community, they should receive information in a way that is reasonable with that position, that's all I'm saying. It's, and I would love to go to town hall meetings.
So then you become a citizen if you go to the town hall meeting?
Well, it's in addition too, so I would, listen, I would like to go to the town hall meetings to support the agenda. I'm just saying, as a board member, I have an expectation that our board is addressed as a board, that there develops a relationship between the CEO and the board. Mark can have his, Tony can have his, I can have mine, we can have our individual relationships, but as a board. And I think that's where our function, that's very uniquely different than a citizen or than a staff member. I think that staff members should not get their information through a town hall meeting, is that fair?
Working on that piece, however, at town hall meetings, you get to hear the concerns of the citizens, the parents of the children, some of the difficulties that they are facing.
And we, believe me, we get those very regularly, I still get, I still get emails from citizens, I still get phone calls, I still get people walking up to me and asking me and talking to me about what's going on in the district. We're not removed from those pieces, I get as frequent communication from citizens as I did before. The only communication, communication piece that I'm, that we're lacking now, is that one, it's not like we're disconnected from the city in which we live.
Want the information from him to come, whatever he's doing, you want the information to come down.
You as a board.
We, yes, and we like to establish an interactive relationship as a board and a CEO, just like a board and a superintendent, or a board and a treasurer. Yes, ma'am.
Whatever he's doing, you, you want a, a document, I mean, a letter, or what do you want from him? This is what I can't understand.
And what, 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 what is it, we're teaching him what we want.
No, you want, you want, oh, so you want, but I want the budget, I want so-and-so, I want your wants, you want him to answer your wants?
We, what we expect is that we would have communication with the leadership of our district. What we expect is, as an elected board, who has certain responsibilities and certain charges, that we would be able to have a relationship in which there's communication of that information, that is not unreasonable. There are going to be, there are things that will be requested of us that will not be requested at a town hall meeting, correct?
Okay.
So we have a, so we have a job, and the job that we do.
Give me an example, you want him, like, if he, whatever he decides to say, dear board, this is what I'm looking for. What exactly, I want you to break it down like I'm a kindergarten, break it down to me. I know you don't have enough time, but I mean, you're going to talk, I want to know, what do you really want? I'm, I'm still confused, okay?
Well, had you been at the town hall meeting, you would have had a lot of answers to your questions referring to the pipe yard. I understand the piece of the board and the CEO, I understand that, but I still think, you can, and you're saying you get emails, okay, maybe perhaps the other board members do too, but I still think you can get a feel of some of the concerns that parents have. Everybody doesn't know you, everybody doesn't feel comfortable emailing a board member. But they felt more comfortable at some of these meetings, and there's always different concerns. And like I said, it's very transparent, but I understand your point.
Okay, next board meeting is February fifth at five PM, right here at Lorraine High Media Center. I need a motion to adjourn. Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes. This has been a production of Lorraine City Schools TV twenty WLCS.